But at the same time, we can't just push it over to the state and expect them to do something in, you know.
They would have already done something if it was that big of an epidemic, I guess.
I would, I would say there are twenty-three municipalities in the state of Missouri. Several, lots of them that are a lot bigger than us and lots of them that are a lot smaller than us. That have figured out a way to do this. And I'd hate to see it say that Missouri is, or not Missouri, that Cape is hunting it because we can't figure it out. Or it's not the public health.
I didn't think about it. I never, I mean, in a hundred percent transparency, it was never with me, like us figuring it out. We really wanted to figure it out. I just don't think it's something that we should figure out. I really have this, I'm sorry, but my age, I'm thinking, we've got people, I know the argument of, you, people. Not people like you, sorry. There is this argument out there that are like, well, let's not, people, um, the eighteen-year-olds that fight in war and da-da-da-da-da. Well, I, I really look at that as a, as a thing. Like, they can vote. They can fight. They can, we can hire them to work for us. We can, they, they're adults. They're adults and they are, we let them make their own decisions. We are imposing some laws and regulations on them that I don't feel, that's over-governance on an adult.
So that adult who's still in high school, who purchases the product across the street from the school and brings it in and gives it to a sixteen-year-old shouldn't be. We shouldn't even try.
Then, then make the ordinance that if you're in high school, you can't buy it.
Well then, I mean if.
Well, that's what you're saying. I mean, because they, we're not talking about the nineteen-year-olds, the twenty-year-olds and.
An adult will still be able to buy it. Anybody over the age of twenty-one would walk in and.
But an adult legally is eighteen years old, so then just change the ordinance to if you're in high school, you can't buy tobacco.
But somebody can legally be in high school until they're twenty-one, right?
Well, you're talking about high school and that, so.
Is there anybody in education systems that could be, please, legally be in high school until they're twenty-one? I think that's actually what it is.
I don't think.
Be until.
Yeah.
Maybe we should put this back on the agenda somewhere.
Well, I just.
They up the age for everything for twenty-one.
The fact that, I'd like to see some stats in the cities that have passed it. If the actual, if the actual usage has gone down that much because.
It's a full point.
I think it's just, it's a feel-good ordinance.
It really is.
That really makes you, you're doing the right thing. But ninety percent of those kids, if they want it, they can get it online. You can buy, you can buy any vaping product online, no restrictions or aid whatsoever.
And quite frankly, all they're gonna do at that point, I mean, there's.
Mr. Mayor, I might, I might point out that in the proposal that was given to the council. Um, people of those younger ages would be able to purchase if there was no prohibition on that. The prohibition was on people selling to them.
True. And there was talk of having, uh, requiring the seller of vaping products to pay like an occupational license tax. In order to pay for, uh.
Enforcement.
Enforcement. Uh, that's a violation of handcuffs.
Oh, that was in the.
Yeah. Unless it was tax-approved by the supporters in Cape Girardeau, it would be a violation of handcuffs. There are lots of little, little things in that, in that, in the sample ordinances that just didn't make sense and. You know, I'm all for allowing it and I, and I understand that, I understand the problem. But the problem is not so much who's buying it. As who's selling it and the percent of nicotine. Your Juul products have a great, real high concentration of nicotine. And. As a city doing this is not going to stop that. It's not going to stop them from selling that stuff online. It's, it's the nicotine that gets them addicted.
Well, shouldn't we do anything that we can do in order to.
I think we need to, we need to see if maybe there are better educational things out there to help with this. And try that route rather than trying to pass an ordinance that's going to be ineffective.
But over the years, there have been numerous non-smoking educational things.
Non-smoking educational things are tended to get people to vape instead of smoke because long-term wise.
That's the issue.
It is, it is healthier to vape than it is smoke, supposedly.
Yeah.
A lot of the people that you're having around, especially that are having respiratory issues and whatnot, uh.
So we're seeing this mass migration from smoking into vaping and vaping is starting to seep into our schools. So I just feel like there should be, we, we should stem the tide.
I'd be anxious to see what like the Cape Public Schools actually.
I think, I think a massive educational effort on the heart, on behalf of not just Cape Public Schools, but your Catholic schools. Your Christian schools, everybody, on what the harms of the nicotine is and what it does is going to be a lot more effective than. Local ordinance is going to be hard to enforce.
I think, you know, since, since none of, not all schools are under the same umbrella. I think that by the city, which is, you know, which by most proximity contains those schools. Us passing this type of ordinance would point in the direction of exactly that. And we can put this, we can, you know, put this on another agenda if we want to continue the conversation. But I just think, you know, if we, if that's the goal, is to put it out there that this is, you know, this is not a good thing, that people should not be, you know. People underage should not be doing it. Then the city is the one unifying body that supersedes the district and, you know, the Catholic schools and Lutheran schools and everything else.
I just don't know how much, I, my, I question validity on really how much of an infiltration we've got. With eighteen and nineteen-year-olds that are seniors in high school. Selling vape pens. I, I'm, I mean, I'm more worried about drugs and guns than I am vapes. I mean, and another ordinance that we can't really police is ineffective. I mean, it's just.
I don't know, one could argue the effectiveness over an ordinance that would make it illegal versus the effectiveness of education. That is, that is essentially punting that education and the cost of the development of the education programs to the schools. To the city, to the health organizations, whatever. You can argue whether that. Yeah, we can have that argument all day long.
You can, yeah, I mean, either one, either one.
But at the end of the day, with passing the ordinance, it makes it illegal for that younger adult generation. I said, I think we may, you'd have to make a strong case that it would make it, um, easier for them to access that tobacco. I mean, at the end of the day, it would make it harder for them to access that tobacco.
You can pass an ordinance.
So it's a step in the right direction from the public health standpoint.
You can pass an ordinance that says it's illegal for anybody to sell it to anybody under twenty-one. But is that going to be effective in stopping the high rate, the high percentage of nicotine? Is that going to be effective in stopping people from buying it online? No.
No, but you can't legislate those things at local level.
No.
So here, here's, here's my comment. Sounds like from where Scott's coming from. He's wanting guidance for city staff on what to do next. Just from my perspective, what I would like to see happen next, I'd like to see some numbers from some of these, these cities that have, have put the ordinance in place. Do they have any statistics on how effective the ordinance has been? You know, I know you, you've talked to some of the other chiefs. You know, what are they seeing as their rate of complaint or whatever, some of those areas?
So what I've heard so far is they've seen absolutely nothing. They're, they're, mostly they're going to complaint-based enforcement, which is what we do now for the, for the underage. And typically, you don't see a whole lot of tobacco-related selling complaints. Um, and, and on the enforcement end, what makes it really difficult to enforce is, it's not like we as police officers can go in and buy some cigarettes and then go, okay, we blessed you. We've got to go out and locate the juke van out, um, that has to be vetted, um, before we can put them in the service, which is what we do with our alcohol. But the al, the juke vans that we get to do alcohol are provided by the state, you know, from other areas into the community to purchase alcohol for us. We would have, we'd have to do that for, to do tobacco ordinance.
Since the discussion that we had, what was that, a month ago, that we had that discussion? There have been numerous articles that I've read, mostly in our local paper, there are local stories and national stories. Just about the epidemic mostly kind of health standpoint. It seems like the FDA is waking up to this problem and sounds like there's a lot that's going to be looked into. Um, even I think, one thing I read is, you know, they're considering banning all flavors even, which would probably. And, and making the, the cigarette smoke prominent, the taste prominent and, and even the baby thing. So that it is perhaps more of a smoking cessation product rather than something that kids would take up, you know, from scratch and enjoy. Um, so it just seems to me like there's a lot in flux. I'm probably sitting on the side waiting a little bit to see where some things land.
Man, I won't presume, I won't presume to know what the legislature is going to do, but I don't think this is an issue they're going to take up anytime soon, just from my perspective. Um, so if it's going to happen, happen, it would have to happen at the local level.
I think you're more likely to see the FDA do something about.
They may do some things on nicotine levels in your vaping products, your Juul, your stuff like that, but. Raising the age is not something anyone wants to weigh into.
Can I answer your question?
We will clear as mud.
Uh, how about we, uh.
Find out if other cities do what, what's happened.
I, I think it'd be great to see some statistics. They've seen a decrease in, you know.
And share that with you. Let's see, uh, how you feel about stuff. And, and we can, we can develop, we can develop ordinance. I'm not saying we can't develop ordinance. We're just saying there's a lot of issues. It's going to take some, some time to develop that, or it's going to take some time to develop, uh, how we would enforce. And so we just, if, if it was going to be a, if consensus, I think let's wait and we didn't want to, we go to work and then wait. So we, we can find out, uh, from, uh, other cities what, uh, what's been the effectiveness of their ordinance.
So you're going to go directly to the cities, looking for nonpartisan.
Right.
Yeah.
That will get the, uh, the.
Sure. School resource officer.
All right, good discussion. Anybody else? Is there anybody here this evening to appear before the council for an item not listed on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
My new person is Nate Thomas. I'm Sue Corr. I don't know if you remember me or not. I met y'all, uh, I was in the first class of first. I have an ongoing issue. I've sent numerous emails. I've made numerous phone calls to the police station. I have a house right next door to me that a tree fell on in that really big storm back in the spring. And took out half the garage. And for three months, the tree laid in the driveway, which is a shared driveway. And my brother who lives with me is disabled. And in order for us to get in and out of our dri, our own parking area at my house. I had to, out of my pocket, pay someone to remove it. And then the house continuously has rodents running in and out of it. The backyard has a couch that was burnt two years ago that I've complained to the city about numerous times. A tree fell in the front yard while my brother was in the hospital and I had to get him home that night. And the only way he can get in my house is through my back, back door. So the $200, I had that mess cleaned up. Now the house is empty. The house belongs to a corporation, according to the people I've been talking to at the city. But nobody wants to do anything to help me. Y'all are sitting here talking about regulating vaping. When I moved back to Cape after being gone for thirty years. Because I felt like Cape was a place where I could be comfortable as a senior citizen. And I wouldn't have to worry about, is my neighbor bothering to pick up their own trash? Or is their yard being mowed? I've got vermin coming out of her yard into mine and I'm paying exterminators and killing snakes in my backyard.
What's your address?
One eleven South Louisiana. And I have pictures if y'all would like to see what I'm living next door to. I mean, it's not, I know I live in an old part of town. I chose an old part of town because I'm comfortable there. But to get a, get a car that was abandoned on the fourth day of July. Finally got it moved after contacting the police four times, twice in person. And sending numerous emails, it finally got moved September the third. Why?
She didn't take that long.
Oh, it's only supposed to take forty-eight hours. But nobody bothered to come out.
Who owned the car?
No, it had no license on it. It was full of junk, didn't even have bumpers on it. I have no clue who it belonged to. It just showed up on the fourth of July and it took to the thirtieth of September to get it moved. And, you know, I understand you're concerned about the children coming up. I understand that, got it. But what about us senior citizens that are here? That I expect the ordinances to be maintained for my protection and my property's protection? What am I doing wrong?
Our nuisance laws are designed to handle situations like this a lot quicker than what you've experienced tonight. I don't know why that, I don't know why that's happened, but it's something that we'll.
Well, I was told, I was told by one of the city employees that I was picking on a senior citizen. I said, really? She informed me I'm ten years older than her, so what does that make me? I, I mow my yard.
Is, you're talking about the person that lives next door?
Now the house is empty.
But there was somebody living.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I don't know what to do. I don't know where to go. So I just, I already warned Nate I was going to do this. He knew I was coming, but. You know, I, I'm tired of it. I'm a citizen of this community. I maintain my property. And the only thing I'm asking is the city enforce the ordinances and make whoever owns that property maintain it.
I don't disagree with that.
I don't disagree at all.
So what do I do? Y'all are the city council. You tell me what to do.
I will be looking at that first thing in the morning. I, I am not familiar with this property, so I don't have an answer for what's transpired right now.
I even walked into the police station twice about the car.
I will.
You'll have, and Ty, you look at it and use. And a nuisance impediment.
Sue, in, in the, in Ward One, especially in the Red Star District, we deal with this all the time. It was a couple of months ago, we actually had a pretty solid conversation about some of the derelict properties. Um, after a recent issue in, in Ward One, I went and did sort of an inventory of some of the derelict properties that are around, uh, and, and around in our, our, our area. We've got a lot of property that needs to be reviewed and overseen. And so I know that that's been something that we've all started conversations about, about how to best take care of all these things. Because there's a lot of derelict homes, there's a lot of things that just.
Yeah, two of them on the agenda tonight, Derek.
I know, I saw that. You know, my, my whole point is, it shouldn't have to get to the point of being a derelict property. If the ordinance that's in place that says you shall maintain your property is ever enforced. It would make a big difference, but it's not enforced until it becomes a major problem. And they can tell you what it looks like next door to my house. That's lowering my property value. I worked very hard to keep my property up. If something needs to be done, I get it fixed. I just had gravel put in my parking area because it was getting slushy. You know, I'm not, I'm not the kind of person that won't help. If there's trash in the street, my trash can, when I take my trash can down, it's about half-full of what's in my street. Our street never gets, sees a street washer. Our street never sees anybody doing any maintenance. They finally replaced a broken sidewalk after six years. Only because they had replaced the water line that the tree grew through. But my point is, okay, I love it that children are beautifying downtown, whoopee. I love it that, you know, we have nice sections of town. What about all of us that maintain our property in the old parts of town? We just need some help, you know?
We've said, I've said this before, we've had, we've had incidences like this before. My first, my first response to the public was take pictures.
You want them?
And get it to us so we know what it is. And we will do it.
We have a continued effort, Sue.
Oh, I've emailed them.
Well.
This is what you see when you walk out of my side door.
Not, not make excuses, but when, when you have property owners that you don't know the address, I mean, they're out of town. It is hard to find addresses and get them processed.
Well, this is the property management that it turns out.
Right, right, but you have to notify over again.
And the company is prestigious.
You're legally, you have to follow the steps. That's what takes time sometimes.
Sue, I would like to, well, one, I want to reiterate what everybody else said, that we have a concerted effort to help clear up the blighted properties in the neighborhoods. I will say, not even that it's because it's my ward, but it's also the same block that I live on. And I also have a committed effort to do that. And I apologize that I've just gotten to know you, but I look forward to working with you and your.
You know, I mean, my whole thing is, I don't mind helping anybody. But that's, I think that's beyond ridiculous. I've put up with it now for over almost a year. And I'm just at the point, if the property isn't going to be maintained, there's got to be something the city can do.
I will tell you this, it is a long, long process to go through connotation. The whole process because of the legal system requires you do this, requires you do this. If we attempt to contact the owner and the owner doesn't respond, then we're kind of stuck between rock and hardwood, just like you may be.
But there's a process.
There is a process, you have to give it time.
There's a process, you have to give it a certain amount of time.
You're worried they're not in process.
The, the process is never been started. I've been complaining about it now for over a year. Every time that, that the yard ever got mowed previously, either I wound up doing it. Or I'd call, I'd sent seven emails to Mr. Metzger. And finally somebody showed up and got the yard mowed. It was, this has been since I bought my property and I'm just, I'm.
I, I commend you for bringing it forward to us. I commend, well, I was there.
Yeah, I warned you.
And her brother, her brother was driving out as I was speaking with her in the front, in the yard. And that rose bush that's around in the shared driveway just scraped the end of his truck and made this horrible sound, so. I mean, it is an ordinance property. It needs to be addressed. I commend you for the efforts. One, not only bringing it to our attention, but as everybody should, but then. Our, that particular part of our, of town, I mean, it's on the upward trajectory and it's through these efforts that we continue on that. I mean, there's been, I've noticed with the efforts with the nuisance, the chronic nuisance apartment complex. With the implementation of the security systems, that.
That has improved a lot. We don't have blue lights every night.
Exactly. It has helped tremendously. It's helped with some of the, um, questionable folks walking onto our property and et cetera. So, um, it's in the upward trend and it's only through efforts like this that we'll continue to go on that upward trend and hopefully can address.
Well, I'm just asking the council for some help in dealing with the people that are supposed to be enforcing the ordinances. And don't tell me that I'm picking on a senior citizen. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Stay in touch with that, with Nate.
Oh, he lives at the end of my street. He can't get rid of me. I'm that, I'm that.
Also make sure he mows his yard too.
You know, y'all have heard the joke about the old man that yells, get off my property? Yeah, well, I'm the old woman in town that says, pick up your trash.
That's great. We need a thousand more people like that. Please do.
Well, I told her when she came out before, when she walked in, and she told me she was kind of presenting, like, you know, you could have just walked down the street and told me.
This is how the West was won. You gotta, you gotta come to.
Well, you know, the whole thing is, if you don't do it now, how much worse is it going to be next year? And with the vermin running in and out of that house.
That's why we need to hear about these situations, not just from you, but other people in the city who are having the same issues. And Scott knows that. There are lots of, there are lots of places down in South Cape that are the same way.
There's lots of places everywhere.
There are places all over town that are.
Oh, I know. But my question is, why aren't the ordinances enforced?
Chief, do you, do you have a kind of information or do you?
No, I need that.
Okay, if you could give him your, your kind of direction, that way you can be sure to get back to you tomorrow. And bring you up to date on all the, all the issues, to exactly where we are, exactly what the next step's on.
And to answer your question, the broad stroke is, is that the truths of it is that it shouldn't have come to this.
No.
It shouldn't. And, and that's where Chief will get to the bottom of it, find out. And I know that he will make sure that they tweak to make sure that this doesn't happen.
Well, I'm done with it now. I'm not working anymore, so y'all are going to put up with me complaining, okay?
I'll call Robert and make sure he.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, Robert loves it when his mother embarrasses him. But I do it well.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, y'all. What I want to bring up is, um, if there's something that you've done. I know there's a, when I say we, the city did a project with the lighting on Spray Street. But right in the five-hundred-block Middle Street, that's like one of the drop streets in that area over there. There's a lot of drug activity. I know that come over every day because I have brothers, I mean, relatives that live in the block. But from.
You said five-hundred blocks, yeah?
Yeah, like from, what is that, Jefferson Street or how the name is, Jefferson Street. Back up to the little college street area, it's pitch dark. And so what you see a lot of is there's people that were literally, we're sitting on the porch. There's people that were literally pull up, make these drug deals and then drive off. Well, one of the things that's happening is, uh, some of our relatives are starting to address it more directly. And I'm afraid like it's going to turn into something that you don't have to come to. But like I know at five-twenty-two, Middle Street, South Middle Street, there's a, a light there. But there's no bulb there. I mean, the street is literally dark and there, there's a lot of crime. I mean, a lot of drug sales would go on. There's a lot of.
There's a, there's a full on light over there. That's an easy thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's been dark for a long time.
Especially those new light bulbs.
Absolutely. And, and what's happening now for whatever reason, a lot of the crime and stuff is happening now. It's coming, it's not coming from just one source. It's coming from people that don't even live in the neighborhoods and communities and things like that. And so for whatever reason, some people don't speak up, but I still have family members and kids. I almost ran over a little girl this morning down there because her mom just moved into the neighborhood. She's in the house sleeping and I'm backing up into a parking spot. Little girl ran behind the truck, the other little girl screamed. I thought I had killed the little girl. Wondered why they wasn't in school. So one of the properties down there, one of the landlords had, we were going to put this project there. That would change the area within a four-block radius overnight, just with the Missouri coverage support services that we do. Well, ironically, the house across the street sold for like eight grand and they bought it. He wanted to sell us this house for like sixty-five grand. I was like, man, are you serious? These are the type of issues that when we try to do our part to help and to help out, even with issues that. Uh, even a councilwoman may not be aware of or know about, just trying to work together. These are the issues that we face. And I know like on Middle Street right now, it's just pitch dark. And if they, if, if they just put a light there, like in the middle of the block, I think it would change a lot of what's going on over there. Because it goes on, on a regular basis, because we all know like whether the chief and the officers doing their job. A lot of people are going to say, you're not doing your job, you're not doing your job. But when they ask some questions, they're not going to tell them anything. So it has to start somewhere. And I think just a simple thing in that area, like a, a, a new light pole there or something on those LED lights. I think it would, it would change a lot of what's going on there.
Right, thank you, Murray Martin. Scott, you know what I do? Whenever I see a, a light bulb that's out, I actually just take a picture with my phone. Because you can call Ameren and there's numbers on there and just tell him, hey, the light's out at four, five, six, you know, something, something. And then he'll send a crew out and change the light bulb.
Well, they've actually done that and, uh, what they told him is like, it'll be an extra charge to the person that's living in the house or something like that.
If they, if that private residence made a request for that light to be on there, it is added on to their bill. And if that person then leaves and the new one happens and doesn't want. If that person then leaves and the new would have to, doesn't want it, then yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't like that they, they, but also about, I'm not sure if everybody knows and invited, that, you know, we have this anonymous text line, there's drug deals going on, take a picture and text it immediately.
Yeah, and even, although that works, a lot of them just mindset and I think they, they go out and they, they address it like literally.
I, I just tried to, uh-
Yeah, I know.
You don't want any conflict occurring, so rather see that situation happen.
Yeah, and I think that if, if that area just gets, that light gets, gets lit up right there in the block.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put the lights and see if there's anything that needs to be turned on.
But there are some of those lights that Ameren on and there are many of them that the city on, so it's, it depends on what the situation is.
But I just wondered, bring that to y'all too.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Your smile!
I'll get your smile.
Thanks, Ramona.
If not, we will move into the agenda review.
Okay. We have one public hearing tonight, we have a rezoning of six twenty-three North Main Street, this is the, uh, Riddell's House across from the, uh, casino, and, uh, so we'll have that public hearing and then we will have item number nineteen is that, uh, that first reading of that, um, public, uh, rezoning, the, to CBDs. Items, uh, three and four, the consent agenda of the second, third readings of those record plats. Uh, number five would be the, a demolition contract, uh, for a couple of properties on North Water and North Henderson, um, moving forward with the demolition of those. Uh, number six is the, uh, license agreement here for the, uh, Cape public schools at, at Flitburg, put some bumpers out, uh, on the right way, uh, that's protection for the, uh, playground, I guess. Um, number seven is the, um, health insurance, boy health insurance, you heard about earlier. Uh, eight is the dental plan, uh, and then number nine is a license agreement agreement with the Tracys, Ryan and Deb, uh, they have some, we have some real wide right way and we're, you know, white, and we're going to just work on West End. While we were doing that, found out they have some fences, some different items on the right way, it just allows them to leave it there and, and, um, don't be an ally or to do that. Uh, it released, released a lien of the Affordable Housing Grant program on three oh six South Benton. It's good, good news, they've, uh, paid off that loan. Uh, number eleven is license agreement agreement for evil litter enterprises at one twenty Broadway, uh, for, uh, audit. Number twelve is a license agreement for a monument signing, uh, going into the new subdivision at Highlands at Popper Crossing. Uh, number thirteen is the time extension for this-